Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 681. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for North Nagley Residences at 327 North Nagley Avenue. Councilmember Cruz-Pasz presents Bill Number 675. Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of PA Department of Human Services for Grants in Connection with the EARN Program and Providing for Authorizations Cost not to exceed $3,828,594. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 676. Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 28 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until October 6th, 2020, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 677. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Cecy Portuguese in the amount of $105,000 relating to the full and final settlement of an imminent domain case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 678. Resolution authorizing eight open and professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by various departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof. Bill Number 679. Resolution authorizing nine open and professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and land as needed by various departments of the City of Pittsburgh, each agreement being in an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options. Bill Number 680. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the University of Pittsburgh's Small Business Development Center for Training, of Consultation With, and Promotion of a Curriculum aimed at developing skills for small business owners who do not yet do business with the city as part of the city's required deliverables for our Living Cities Grant Cost not to exceed $30,000. Bill Number 689. Resolution amending Bill Number 768 of 2019 authorizing a Cooperation Agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the URA of Pittsburgh to divert 75% of the incremental parking taxes from the garage up to a maximum of $10 million to fund affordable housing at the proposed city's edge development in the uptown neighborhood of the City of Pittsburgh and by adding language that would also allow for the funding of infrastructure, public space improvements, and a combined 508-space parking structure on-site, as well as reducing the amount of proposed affordable housing units from 77 to 63, and this bill is sponsored by Councilman Daniel Lavelle. Councilman Bobby Wilson presents Bill Number 682. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the Hanauer Rosenberg House located at 417 Lockhart Street in Deutstown, 23rd Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 683. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain sites known as the Spring Hill School located at 1351 Damas Street in Spring Hill, 24th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 684. Resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IX Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, Section 905.03d, and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12.G for Allegheny General Hospital Institutional Master Plan dated August 17th, 2020. And Council President Theresa Kell Smith presents Bill Number 685. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Leah Northrup as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities for Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. Bill Number 686. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Mr. Mark Schmeller as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. And Bill Number 687. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Mr. Kai Roberts as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a great day.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City's YouTube channel, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Kell Smith. Reverend Burgess, Chair.
Here.
Six Members President.
Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Those of you who wish to stand may stand or place your hand on your heart or just think of the greatness of our country and shall we recite their Pledge of Allegiance in unison? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to her public which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, life and liberty and justice for all. Do we have a moment of silence? I believe our next order of business is proclamations. I believe we have two to be written to the record.
Bill Number 690. Councilmember Lavelle and our members present, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby comment the third Episcopal District of the African Methodist Episcopal Church for its 75th anniversary of the annual conference. Bill Number 691. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh do hereby commend the Allegheny Fayette County Labor Council for honoring veterans and serving our communities in various ways and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, September 4th through Monday, September 7th, 2020 to be Allegheny Fayette Central Labor Council Weekend. This bill is sponsored by Council President Theresa Kell Smith. And Bill Number 692. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the month of September to be Disabled American Veterans Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
For a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Resolutions are passed. The next order of business is public comment. I'd like to remind everyone of the rules of council state. The comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Revendity will not be permitted and order will still be maintained at all times. Will we have our first speaker, please, which I believe is William Parker?
How are you doing today?
I'm blessed. How are you?
Same. I'm blessed as well. My name is William Parker. I represent my company, Vinspin. I just wanted to say a few things. Black Pittsburgh matters. It would be great if we could encourage the same interest in tech as we have for river state with tech, the possibilities are endless. I hope you all have the time to take out to look into this opportunity. It's imperative that we're included within any emerging industry within a city, region, and state. It's been said that Pittsburgh catches on too late. Well, this can't continue to be the case here in Pittsburgh. Tech may not be your area of expertise, but that doesn't mean that you can't connect with someone in this field and understand how you could draft legislation so that no one is left out or left behind or denied access or investments. And with that, I'll end.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parker. Next, we have, and again, I will apologize if I mispronounce, but I have Ikana Maumakina.
Greetings, folks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I would like to thank everyone in City Council for hearing my voice today. I greet you with peace, love, and light. On behalf of the Air Qua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, I speak, we are one people, many nations, and many nations, one people. I am here to remind those people who are responsible for allocating and distributing an honoring oath that you have a three extreme responsibility to take care of the people, for you are stewards of the people. And we, the Aboriginal people, are the stewards of the land. And you have an obligation to indigenous people to make sure the lands, the airs, the waters, the soil is cleans and clean and cared for. And you have a duty and obligation to the people. And it is you who make sure that they're taken care of. So with that being said, while City Council is allocating funds for various projects throughout the city, I think it's there needs to be a closer look taken at how you can solve the issue of poverty, the issue of inequitable distribution of land and also resources to the people. How this issue could be solved is instead of building parks, as I walk through the city, I see lots of people who are homeless, who are needy. And to add insult to injury, this plandemic, as most people look at it as, can be solved as well. You're building a park downtown that is not needed when there are people who are hungry in this city, people who are homeless in this city. How dare you build a million-dollar park when there are issues concerning people? And I think of the brother Bruce Kelly who was mauled by a dog and just sought to defend himself. And he was shot down. And then they paraded around after his death in honor of a feline, in honor of a dog. I think we need to reconsider the value of human life in these cities, in these boroughs, in these towns, in these regions. We need to value human life. And it is up to you all to make sure that that is done. Each and every one of you, you have taken an oath to uphold, support, protect, and defend the Constitution for the United States.
Thank you very much. We have now Mr. David Dimko. Mr. Dimko, are you online? Mr. Dimko, are you online? Can we reach you in some way? Well, I'm not being able to hear Mr. Dimko. I will assume that there are no further speakers. All right, our next order of business now will be presentation of papers. And so, first of all, myself, Councilman Burgess, the Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Coghill, for me.
No new papers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
I believe, Mr. President, that Mr. Coghill is not here, but I am here. In alphabetical order here, so I'll hand in the papers for Mr. Coghill, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
No new papers.
No new papers. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
I think, actually, I've been scrolling through my agenda, Mr. President, if you'll bear with me. It looks like I also have no new papers. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
You have papers.
I'm looking for my papers.
You have one.
Oh, there it is. There it is, Madam, yeah, Mr. President and Madam Clerk, Bill 681.
Yes. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 681. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for North Nagley Residences at 327 North Nagley Avenue.
Thank you very much. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 675. Resolution Providing for the Filing of Applications by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for Grants in connection with the Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement and Retention Network and providing for the authorization to enter into agreements with various agencies and to pay for expenditures or costs to support, implement, and administer the program Cost not to exceed $3,828,594. Bill Number 676. I'm sorry, that's it.
All right, that takes me to Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 676. Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17th, 2020 to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for 28 additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until October 6th, 2020, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 677. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Cecy Portuguese and her attorneys in the amount of $105,000 relating to the full and final settlement of an imminent domain case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas by the city. Bill Number 678. Resolution authorizing eight open and services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by the various departments. Each agreement being in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof. Bill Number 679. Resolution authorizing nine open and professional services agreements with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure, buildings, and lands as needed by various departments of the city. Each agreement being in an amount not to exceed $750,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the cost thereof. Bill Number 680. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with the University of Pittsburgh's Small Business Development Center for Training of Consultants with and Promotion of a Curriculum aimed at developing skills for small business owners who do not yet do business with the city as part of the city's required deliverables for our Living Cities Grant, the total cost not to exceed $30,000. Bill Number 689. Resolution amending Resolution Number 768, which authorize a Cooperation Agreement between the City and the URA to divert 75% of the incremental parking taxes from the garage up to a maximum of $10 million to fund affordable housing at the proposed city's edge development in the uptown neighborhood of the city by adding language that would also allow for the funding of infrastructure, public space improvements, and a combined 508-space parking structure on-site, as well as reducing the amount of proposed affordable housing units from 77 to 63.
Mr. Lavelle.
Yes, a motion to waive the rules of council on Bill 676 so it can appear under final action today.
Give a second. Any conversation? Seeing no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Next, we have Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Access Management.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 682. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Henular Rosenberg House located at 417 Lockhart Street in Deutstown, the 23rd Ward of the city. Bill Number 683. Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as the Spring Hill School located at 1351 Damas Street in the Spring Hill, 24th Ward. Bill Number 684. Resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article II, Chapter 905, and Article VII, Chapter 922, Section 922.12G for Allegheny General Hospital Institutional Master Plan dated August 17th, 2020 on property zone EMI Educational Medical Institution District, 8th Ward, Council District Number 7.
Thank you very much. Now, that leads us to President Kell Smith. She has three appointments. Brenda?
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 685. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Mrs. Leah Northrup as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. Bill Number 686. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Mr. Mark Schmeller as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2021. Bill Number 687. Resolution informing City Council of the Appointment of Mr. Kai Roberts as a member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities for a Term to Expire December 31st, 2021.
Thank you very much. I need a motion to read, receive, and file.
So moved.
Second.
Give a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We will now move to unfinished business. Is there any further unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is report of committees for final action. Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Chair.
Mr. President.
Of Finance and Law.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 669. Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for September 2nd, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 638. Ordinances amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances that Title II, Fiscal Article I, Administration, Chapter 219, Operating Budget, Section 21903, Collaborative Budgeting Process. Bill Number 639. Resolution authorizing and directing the issuing of a warrant to a Co-Copreneur LLC for the sponsorship of events related to small business engagement and education. Bill Number 640. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Brenda Richmond, the administrance of the estate of Christopher M. Tompkins in an amount of $13,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 641. Resolution amending Resolution 431. Authorizing the City Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with Tofaris, Cosnick, Yokitis, and Barrett and Nelly for professional legal services regarding ethics matters by increasing the total cost $15,000 from $30,000 to $45,000.
You've heard the reading and title of the bills. Are there any, is there any discussion on the bills?
Mr. President.
Ms. Gross.
Yes, thank you. I didn't object to Bill 638 last week at Standing Committee when we discussed it. And it is the bill that amends the requirement for the Mayor to issue a preliminary September budget so that this year alone, for the 2021 budget, the Mayor would not have to issue a preliminary capital and operating budget to City Council by September 30th. And so it's interesting that, you know, we're facing certain, a lot of capacity issues with us all working remotely. I think we and the public are all concerned about our revenue shortfalls because of the pandemic. And I did discuss this some weeks ago with Chief Gilman when he first brought it up to me. I told him, I understand the administration's position that it's difficult to present a balanced budget and that we're all very worried about, especially making payroll for, especially our 2021 budget and the kind of looming discussion of possible personnel cutbacks. And it's a very serious matter. And it's a very serious matter and it's just, it's concerning to all of us, I think. But putting off a formal budget review, right? This is usually issued as a, as a, as a paper, a budget that everyone can see with all full budget lines, but with like draft written over all of the pages. Uh, and just really kicking that, that can back to late October or maybe even early November. Um, I think puts the public and council in uh, more of a pressure situation late in the calendar year. And especially now when we've seen, you know, a hundred days or more of demonstrations in the streets really about what we fund and what we don't fund. And we've had active discussions here at council, week after week about how we need to invest more in places where and in people that we've been neglecting. Um, I really hesitate to compress those public discussions to just the end of the fiscal year. And I think it's, it's going to make everyone feel that they didn't have enough opportunity to really digest and take a position, even if we stayed in continuous budget hearings, right? Which we, we do, um, and we meet with every department and the public will have a chance to chime in and be here in our public discussions of our budget. I hope this year more so than previous years. Uh, I think it's still going to be dissatisfying, so I'm, I'm going to vote no today, even though I, I, it took me a while to kind of process my thoughts on, on this issue. So thank you for, for letting me to air them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation? Uh, Mr. Connor?
Uh, yes, I would actually agree with Councilwoman Gross. Um, I think she's absolutely right on this. Um, I do understand the reasoning, so I, I will go forward with this. Um, I did ask budget a number of questions last week. Um, I think my only concern is that we knew there was a hundred million dollar deficit and the deficit really hasn't changed. So, you know, the budget that you're going to put out in three weeks could, or three weeks later could be put out at the same timeframe. Um, I, I do understand it's a one-year thing, so that's why I, I will go with it. I think I'm about fifty-fifty on this, but, um, I think, you know, it's important that everybody knows, especially the general public and a lot of people that work in the city, that, you know, council is going to be up against it with only a month to decide this budget. So if you're concerned about positions, I would start contacting the mayor's office immediately. Um, you know, especially when you're talking about, as Councilwoman Gross just mentioned, you know, where certain funds should be, I would start that process right now. If I'm in the general public, as we do on council, we submit our budget request early. So, uh, I will go forward with this because it's a one-time thing, but I will also caution us that it doesn't look like this is going to end anytime soon. So I do not want to set a precedent that we do this for the next three or four years just because one year we had, you know, a huge issue with COVID, which we all understand, but just because we had a one-year hundred million dollar loss, that's going to set us back for four or five years possibly. So we can't allow this after this year. I'll support it this year because of, you know, the extreme circumstances, but after this, I don't think council should support this for an extended period of time after this year. But I do agree with Councilwoman Gross, and I think it's going to be really difficult on council as well as the public to get their voices heard, which is why I would encourage everybody to start that process right now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other's conversation? Mr. LaVell?
Yes, um, just towards, uh, Councilman O'Connor and Councilwoman Gross's point of council having to deal with this in sort of essentially a month and a half time. Um, and I did have this conversation with our new finance director last week, which is that beginning in October, I believe we need to begin having meetings with the various directors of various departments to have a clear understanding of what the expected budget that will be delivered in November is so that council is not caught off guard. Um, and so we will begin working with our budget director, um, Mr. Bill Urbannick, to begin setting up those meetings. So council members are at least have some sort of sense of what that budget actually looks like when it comes over, so that we're not scrambling at the last second.
Um, anyone else? If there's someone else, there has been, um, a conversation between myself, President Kell Smith, and Mr. LaVell. Uh, Mr. LaVell will lead councils, uh, as the financial chair. Um, he will lead councils, uh, charge into this. Um, uh, certainly all of us are, you know, are able to talk to directors, but I would hope that, um, overall, that we would follow Mr. LaVell's leadership toward questions to him so that he can act as our, our, um, our advocate. I think it would make a lot of sense to have a more streamlined approach. So that's, I'm suggesting that. I'm not, uh, you know, certainly I cannot demand it, but I would suggest that what we should, what we probably should do is start, you know, uh, even if we are talking directly to directors, that we should C C Mr. LaVell so that he can keep track of all the concerns and all the requests in some worse, somewhat of a, a systematic way. Because at the end of the day, I think, um, he will be responsible, uh, for leading us through this, this budgetary process. Is there any more conversation? Seeing no more conversation, the bill is ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye, aye, when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
But no on bill six thirty-eight, aye on the other bills. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye on all bills.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
On bill six thirty-eight, aye six, knows one. On the, all other bills, aye seven, knows zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Uh, a next, um, um, report is, uh, the report from Councilman Corey O'Connor, the Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number six seventy, reported to the Committee on Public Safety Services for September second, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number six forty-two, resolution providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of Scalon Fiber Optics LLC in an amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-six cents for the installation of in-car camera access points for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police. Bill number six forty-three, resolution authorizing the City's Department of Public Safety to purchase hazardous material emergency response equipment from Midland Manufacturing Corporation at a cost not to exceed thirteen thousand eight hundred and one dollars and eighty-six cents.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Um, is there any discussion on these, on these bills? Seeing none, the bill is ready now for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, knows zero.
The bill having received the legally required numbers of votes is passed. Uh, that brings us to, um, Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works. Uh, we have Deb Gross on behalf of Councilman Coghill.
Mr. Chair, thank you.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number six seventy-one, reported to the Committee on Public Works for September second, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number six twenty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a license and maintenance agreement in which the city grants to Walnut Capital a right to plant and maintain landscape improvements upon city property along Bakery Square Boulevard in the Mellon Park. Bill number six twenty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at the Hazelwood Healthy Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. Bill number six twenty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at the Sheridan Healthy Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Bill number six twenty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant fundings from the Pennsylvania Department of Aging's Senior Community Center Grant to make improvements at the Southside Market House Active Living Center and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed fifty-one thousand dollars. Bill number six twenty-nine, resolution granting unto Renewal Inc., their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new exhaust flue that would project into the right-of-way at three twenty-nine Boulevard of the Allies in the First Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill number six thirty, resolution granting unto Smith Brothers Boggs L P their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense three new canopy-covered awnings on an existing building at one twenty Federal Street in the twenty-second ward, First Council District. Bill number six thirty-one, resolution providing for a amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Penn Avenue Reconstruction Phase Two project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars federally reimbursable at eighty percent and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing now, none? The bill is ready now for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, knows zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Uh, that brings us to Councilman Bob, Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Uh, Mr. President?
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number six seventy-two, reported to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for September second, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number six forty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of City Planning on behalf of the city to apply for a grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's Blight Remediation Program to study city-owned bacon lots in the Homewood Neighborhood. The grant proposal includes an ask of twenty-five thousand dollars with a local match of two thousand five hundred dollars to come out of the Pittsburgh's two thousand and twenty operating budget. In the event a grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Um, you've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? None? I've seen none. The bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, knows zero.
The bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Um, that takes us to, um, myself and the Committee on Urban Recreation, Councilwoman Gross for myself.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill number six seventy-four, reported to the Committee on Urban Recreation for September second, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number six twenty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of Parks and Grant to enter into an agreement with Allegheny County Department of Human Services for the city's operation of its senior community centers. Said agreement shall be for a term of one year at a cost, at no cost to the city with compensation to the city not to exceed seven hundred eighty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Bill number six twenty-two, resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of D H S O C R Keys Service Corps in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars for the payment of the two thousand and nineteen AmeriCorps Keys Summer Program, which provides funding for the host and seventeen youth to participate in the Department of Parks and Recreation Educational Programming Jobs Training for the summer. The AmeriCorps member who participated in this program worked alongside city park staff to support the multi-site summer camps and providing for the payment thereof. Bill number six twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the National Recreation and Park Association to provide emergency funding relief for costs incurred by the city's summer food program due to the coro- to the coronavirus and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, knows zero.
Uh, the bill having received the required, legally required number of votes is finally passed. Um, that takes us to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental, you know, Governmental Affairs.
Mr. Chair?
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number six seventy-three, reported to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September second, two thousand and twenty with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number six thirty-three, resolution authorizing the city to enter into an agreement with Allegheny Clean Ways to granted license to Allegheny, to Allegheny Clean Ways to enter into certain city-owned parcels, parcels in order to perform certain work, including assessment and removal of litter and illegal dumping. This agreement will also allow access to certain Department of Public Works Division facilities at Allegheny Clean Ways for disposal of collected litter and illegal, illegal dumping. Bill number six thirty-six, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official soil facilities plan for a sweetbriar houses at four fifty, Route four fifty-four, Sweetbriar Street.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill is well, is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasberger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
This is Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess Chair.
Aye.
Aye, seven, knows zero.
Thank you very much. That bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. I believe that takes us now back to the Law and Finance Committee of where Mr. LaVell is the chair. Uh, we have a bill that has been re-aided. Uh, we need to have it read by the clerk.
Bill six seventy-six, resolution providing for further renewal by the council of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by council on March seventeen, two thousand and twenty, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for twenty-eight additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until October sixth, two thousand and twenty, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Thank you very much. You've heard the reading and title of the bill. Is there any further discussion on the bill? If not, this bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote- bill will vote, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. LaVell?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, Reverend Burgess' Chair?
Aye.
Aye seven, noe zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes is now finally passed. We are now in this, we are now moved to motions and resolutions, things that want to be presented or conversation by members of council.
Councilman?
Kraus?
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could I please call for an executive session on Bill 677?
Chair, give a second.
Yeah, do we need a second and devote on an executive session?
So, the vote on it, I thought was just a request. Brenda?
Yeah, I think it should just be a request.
It's just a request.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Duly noted. Anyone else? I want to suggest then, just one quick thing, that, and I've been thinking about this for, for many months. The President earlier today tweeted out his view disparaged the protests in Pittsburgh. You know, for me, most of, you know, the things I remember are through little stories anecdotes. So, I'll give you a very quick one. When I was in high school, when I, you know, there was only a few of us African-American kids at Central in that time, and I was in a couple activities. And occasionally, when I first got there, you know, sometimes, you know how kids can be, they would call me names that were not my name. And some of those names were ugly names. And I grew up in a period of time in the 60s in Homewood where fighting was in my DNA, right? We fought people from other blocks. We fought because it was Tuesday, you know, we fought because it was too hot. We wrestled, we fought. It was this part of my DNA. So, fighting was in my DNA. In fact, later in life, I would train in martial arts because I decided that I got tired of fighting. If I was going to fight somebody, I was going to end it quickly, right? And, but, back at Central, you know, and so, when they would call me that name, I would immediately hit them. It would be, it would be an automatic reaction. You'd call me the name, you got hit. So, after maybe two or three of those incidents, you know, they called my parents in and said that, you know, my parents were paying tuition, and they made it very clear to me that that sort of behavior was uncalled for. It was a Christian school. And so, and that if I got in another fight, I would be dismissed from, from the school. And so, I spent the rest of my, my years there still being called the names. The names never stopped. I just couldn't retaliate in a violent way. And that had a really big impact on me, because I found out that there is something about providential, if you're doing right, and that it creates its own justice, its own, it creates its own righteousness, creates its own impact. And that I didn't have to be violent, I just had to be right. And I have found that in my career, that if you're just right, if you're just, if you're just, if you're right, that there is a providential power to righteousness. And I'm going to suggest that in many ways, the cause that the demonstrators are protesting for, that they're, they're right and just. And that if, if we can just stick to being right, being right, that, that, that it will have its own providential power. I am reminded, I do not always talk about the book, but at least here in Council, I do talk about it in other settings all the time, but there is a passage that I have to at least share with you, and that's from Micah 6, right? And what does the Lord require? To act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. Listen, the Lord is calling to the city. That, 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 that passage, I think, is really apropos for this moment, right? That the Lord is calling to us, and we have to act righteously and justly. And if we do that, if we discipline ourselves to act rightly and justly and humbly, this is a moment of transformational providential power. And so, that's what I think, and hopefully, as United City, we can act that way. And so, we see our President back with us at the moment. We're in motions and resolutions. President Smith, I made some comments. I, I don't hear you. Is there anything else from anyone else? Is there anything from you, Madam President? You're muted, we can't hear you.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess, for joining me. My husband had a little emergency. I, I want to thank you for chairing the meeting while I was unavailable.
We're always here to be supportive. Is there anything else from members?
I want to run a brush on I vote, well, for the votes I missed.
All right.
I say that.
Don't know it.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Mr. Burgess?
Ms. Gross?
Thank you. I do appreciate your words about this, you know, the President's tweeting about the city. And I'll add that I, myself, this morning saw some more local voices on Twitter, non-city residents, talking about how the city was on fire, and, you know, I'm not going to go to the city. And I just wish that, you know, if we were all live tweeting right now, that people would just see how beautiful it is in many parts of the city, like, really everywhere right now, right? So, this, this, this media conception that we're all somehow under attack every minute. It's a completely false media representation. And I really call out to, some of our media have been, I think, more responsible than others. And certainly, some media personalities, as we've seen in the last few weeks, have been a lot more responsible than others. Some have been downright reprehensible and irresponsible in the portrayals of, of the discussions that we're having in the city, sometimes heated discussions, sometimes in rooms, sometimes in the streets. And that I just kind of needed, I wish it was a more balanced representation. And for everyone to know that social media isn't really a balanced representation either. So, we should kind of, I think, call out those, those voices that are trying to portray our city streets as dangerous. Certainly, you know, my kids are out playing in the street without anyone harming them or threatening them. So, and we have many, many of our fellow citizens are out enjoying this beautiful day, just like anywhere else. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation? Seeing no other conversation, we do have a few meeting announcements. Council will hold a pre-agenda interview tomorrow at 9:30 for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and the Commission on Human Relations. Council's Standing Committee meeting will immediately follow at 10:00 a.m. Also, tomorrow at 6:00 p.m., Council will hold a cablecast public hearing via the Zoom platform on Bill 682, relative to a plan by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to install roundabouts on Reno Street, AKA the Neighborhood. And to register to speak for Council's meeting tomorrow, tomorrow morning, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register for the public hearing tomorrow evening, please call, please call the clerk's office by 3:30 p.m. on Wednesday. You may also submit written testimony via email to City Clerk's Office. That's one word, cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Oh, no.
I'd just like to add that I heard some of the comments about what happened over the weekend, and I will add some comments probably tomorrow. I'm just, I would like to listen, see what members said, but I have, I probably have something to say tomorrow. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Your wisdom's always appreciated. Wisdom to excuse, I need a motion to excuse the absent members to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, saying fah bah saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say nay. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Reverend.